Okay, I'll call the order. The August 19th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance and our chaplain isn't here tonight, so I'll ask for a moment of silence after that and then we'll start our meeting. So if you would, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, due to the Constitution which stands on my nation under God in the judicial, liberatory, and justice for all.
Okay, our next order of business will be a call to the public hearing. For consideration, there'll be two public hearings tonight. The first one is the consideration of an application for a new telecommunications tower on Jones Cove Road. We have our Development and Facility Services Director, Chris Boyd, to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We received an application from Crown Castle, doing business as Verizon, for a new wireless telecommunications facility located off Jones Cove Road in a close proximity to the Community College. It's located on property owned by Norman Medford and his wife. It's proposed to be an 85-foot-tall monopine. I'm going to introduce the representative for Crown Castle, Mr. Robert Cratch, to provide the merits of the application.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Robert Cratch. I represent Verizon Wireless and the law firm of Baker Donaldson. And again, today, we're here for our application to build a wireless cellphone tower off of Jones Cove Road. And it's my understanding that there is a dead zone near the Community College and this cellphone tower would serve a purpose to provide not only cellphone service for Verizon Wireless, but the ability to have co-location where three other wireless providers are allowed to build onto the existing tower to add cellphone service for various needs. It's good for emergency situations and also just your personal cellphones. The tower itself is being placed on a 126-acre tract owned by Mr. Medford. It's an unzoned land. It's right below the Community College. The tower itself is 85 feet in height. It's a monopine tower. It's got a nine-foot extension lightning rod on the top. And these towers are designed to look like a tree as best as it can to blend in with the surrounding areas. The tower itself is going to be surrounded by a 60-by-60-foot fence, eight feet in height, with barbed wire at the top and warning signs all over it. It's going to be locked at all times so no one can get in. There are going to be also no lights emitting from the tower, so that won't be visual from a long distance. We've also done visual site testing and to show what the proposed tower is going to look like. It's in the application. I don't think you have copies, but I can pass this around if you need me to. Literally, we do simulations that show what the height and the tower is going to look like, how it's going to look like from various distances, and how it's going to look like from the Community College. And you can see at the Community College, you can barely even notice it. Additionally, there are no existing towers within a quarter of a mile of this proposed tower site. And again, that comes back to co-location. And co-location is, again, where we try to hop on an existing tower to try to save expense so we don't have to build a whole new tower. But in this situation, there's a dead zone. There's no existing towers in the surrounding areas, so there's a need for this tower. And again, up to three other providers will be able to hop on this tower and build their own antennas. Additionally, meet all FCC requirements regarding the emissions for RFA rays and things of that nature. There's going to be liability insurance in place of $1 million per occurrence and $2 million in the aggregate in event something's going to happen. There are also no residential or commercial buildings anywhere near the immediate vicinity of this tower site. There's fallback zone requirements, you know, set forth in the Haywood County Code, and we substantially comply with all these requirements. It has to be 25 feet back from the nearest property line. We're well within that. There's also the structural design of the tower itself is made so it falls upon itself in the event of a fall. So there's literally three breaks in the tower if it fell over. So it's not going to fall that 85 feet. It's going to be about a 15, 20-foot fall based on each segment. We try to mitigate damage as much as possible. We don't have an engineer tonight, but we have structural engineering reports in our application that shows that it's all up to steel. The tower itself is made of steel, and there are specific steel building codes and construction codes that we all comply with. Lastly, I'd like to show that the tower itself meets all requirements set forth in the Haywood County zoning, Chapter 115. The height is well below the application requirements. It's 85 feet. It's in a dense vegetative area where the average tree line is 38 feet, and per the code, we're allowed to go up to 60 feet above that. You know, again, 85 feet is well within those height ranges. That's kind of the broad strokes of the application. And again, all the statute requirements have met, but I'm happy to entertain any specific individual questions you all may have about the tower site.
Okay. Does any Commissioner have any questions?
I wouldn't mind looking at the pictures that you have. I haven't seen the pictures.
And again, if you look at Exhibit 6, that's the site. Then Exhibit 12 is the test.
You said you're 25 feet from a property line. Is that the fall zone where it lands?
So the fall zone requirements by statute are say that we have to be 25 feet from the nearest property line plus equidistant from the 85 feet. So with my math, that's why I'm an attorney, 25 plus 86. I don't know. But we're well beyond that height limit. There's nothing...
So you're more than 110 feet from the property line?
Yes. It's several hundred feet.
Oh, okay. The photos, it'd probably be good. We didn't have those in the pack, right, Candy? Okay. Probably good to have those available to put on our website, maybe?
And we can send you copies of everything, and I can work with Chris, and we can make that all available for y'all.
Okay. Yeah, if you could give us the photos and then, because we won't vote on this tonight, we'll vote on it next meeting. But it'll be on the next meeting agenda, then if anybody has, they can look at the attachment.
Not a problem. And I can literally furnish you that whole report if you'd like for me to make that available to y'all as well. It's kind of the broad strokes, the application itself, the insurance information, FCC information, the visual impact studies, the engineering reports. It's all contained therein.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Is it located on the ridge? Is this the ridge that you've got? I see the Poison Cove site here.
It is at a higher elevation, but it's not on a protected mountain ridge. Although it is a higher elevation on Mr. ...
All right. And has this, this property was logged recently too, wasn't it?
Selectively logged, yes. Was not clear yet.
And the picture that you have in here, is it Exhibit 12? Is that, is that the actual property?
It's a simulation of what it would look like. I don't know if it's the actual property. They try to use the site closest possible, and they use the Google imaging. It should be the actual property and how it should look like. It's not going to be the exact spot, but it should be pretty close.
Do you have any of those monopine towers in the county currently?
Excuse me?
Do you have a monopine tower in our county currently?
I can answer that. Yes, we do. It's located on Sleepy Hollow Road near the Lake Junaleska Water Tower.
Can't hardly, can't hardly see it unless you know what you're looking for.
Have to really look close.
Right.
They spend a lot of effort trying to find a site where the visual impact is limited so people aren't, you know, I know everyone knows the 1085 where you see going to Charlotte that stands out. And so we do our best to try to make it so the visual impact is very limited and people don't know it's actually there.
If you look for it, you can see it, but you really don't...
You know where it is.
Yeah. Kind of looks like a pine, actually.
We were driving down, I was driving in another vehicle behind my wife. We were driving to Charlotte not too long ago. She called me up on the phone, and she said, "Look at that big tree out there." And I said, "Honey, that's not a tree. That's a cell tower."
We have those pictures.
Oh, you do?
They're part of the application.
Okay. Yeah, we, okay. Let's make that part of the packet next time, if you would. Yes, Chris?
No problem.
Chris, have you reviewed the packet that's been submitted? I know you've reviewed others in the past.
I have. They have the certified tree canopy elevation from a surveyor. They do not exceed the 60 feet. They provided the relevant portions of a lease, the insurance certificate, the maintenance removal bond, the maintenance removal agreement. They've provided everything required by the ordinance.
You might just touch on also, Chris, that when we do communications tower, we have to approve those, I mean, if it meets our ordinance, right? By federal law.
Absolutely. There are certain questions that we can't ask that are preempted by federal law. We can't ask about electromagnetic emissions. We can't ask about what's the part of the FCC license, other than they have those and they've met the federal requirements. So we can only regulate a small portion of this industry locally.
Have you had many people in the community ask you questions about it or send notices or responses?
Yeah, so we do these all over the state now, you know, and they're...
Come over here so they can hear you.
We do these all over the state, you know, and all over the country, but my firm specifically is North Carolina. We go all over the, all over the state. And yeah, there have been notices to the hearings, and the only issue we've ever had is when there's a dead zone and it's near a residential area, like a development where people just don't like the visual look of the tower. And that's the only time there's ever been any, to be candid with you, any fight.
Right. I just want to make sure you've addressed, if there have been questions that you could address, if you've addressed the questions of the folks in our community if they've asked you.
Yes, yes.
Kirk, we advertised our name and phone number of our office on the public hearing notice. That public hearing notice was included with the mailings to all adjacent and adjoining property owners. We haven't had one call to ask any questions. We additionally posted a physical sign on Jones Cove Road at the intersection of the private road that would access this. We haven't had a call inquiring about any questions at all.
Okay. But this is the one, I forwarded you an email, I think, in the, in the past in regards to this?
It is.
Okay. Okay. I don't have any other questions right now.
Anybody? Okay. Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for public comment. You have three minutes. We allow three minutes to speak, and I'll just say this once because we've got two public hearings and then public comment, so. But if you'd like to public comment just on this issue, you have three minutes to comment. And then there's a green, a yellow, and a red light at the podium. When you see the yellow, you probably have about 20 or 30 seconds. You probably need to wind up, and then the red, your time would be up. So, so at this time, would anyone like to speak about the consideration of this application? Okay, sir, come on up. And state your name and maybe where you live.
Hello, my name's Case Brown. I live in Jones Cove. My family and I, of course, live directly across from this ridge where the tower might be. Naturally, you might imagine my position on it. I would not like to see it for eternity. While I do understand that very likely it meets many of the spatial technical requirements of the ordinance, it's the more qualitative ones that I'm concerned about. Of course, we are in a residential area. I live there. No doubt, this tower may be needed for a dead spot towards, say, the highway, I-40, 1923 spur that comes off. I doubt it's intended, of course, to serve the few hundred people that live in Jones Cove. It seems like to me that the preferences stated in the ordinance for co-location for public properties and to substant, show substantial evidence that the need cannot be met with some reasonable combination of location techniques or technologies elsewhere. It seems to me that Mount Chambers, as you know, overlooks all of the middle of the county, has a lot of towers on it already, and would disturb no new ridges. From my perspective, by all means, the location appears to be on the ridge or near the ridge. It's, if it's above the canopy, certainly it'll be visible to us. And certainly, its beam will be focused toward us as well as across HCC. If my kid was going there, I really wouldn't prefer that. I do appreciate very much the selective logging that's been done on the ridge. It looks great. The ridge has been beautiful my whole life and forever. It's a beautiful forested ridge. For us, it would be a little bit unfortunate to have a very strong structural element on top of that ridge. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Okay, would anyone else like to speak to this issue? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment on this issue. All right, our next public hearing will be, it's a, this is a public hearing for the approval to refund an excise tax overpayment per North Carolina General Statute 105-228.37. And I'll have our attorney, Frank Queen, describe that. This is more of a technicality than a real serious issue, I guess. Go ahead, Frank.
You can file deeds now electronically. And when you file a deed, this is in the Register of Deeds office. When you file a deed electronically, you have to pay the excise tax, or what's sometimes called the stamps, on the deed at the same time you file the deed. So, and the tax is a, is proportional. It's $2 per thousand of the sales price of the property. So if it was a $100,000 sale, there'd be $2 per thousand. It'd be a $200 excise tax. Some of our friends down in Charlotte at the Southern Law Group mashed the button twice, recorded the same deed twice, got a deduct from their bank account twice for the stamps and the $26 recording fee. And because it's a refund of an overpaid excise tax, it has to come before the Board of Commissioners to get them their refund back, which is a total of $550. I told them I'd bring it up to y'all because that's what's required. There's nobody else here from them to ask for their money back.
Okay. And I asked for public comment, right?
Sure.
Okay. Would anyone like to comment on this? Seeing no one, I'll close that public comment. And we'll be voting on both of these next, next time. So it's just a, the general statute is clear, and we want to follow the law. Okay. Okay, our next item of business is our public comment session. And would anyone like to address the board at this time? Okay. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment session. And the next order of business is the constituent concerns. And then Tommy, do you have any?
Well, I had a few, but with Bryant's help and some other county staff, I think we got them resolved. I had a couple of people, had a problem, and, well, one guy in particular, and I was able to go out and visit his property, and I think we can, we can help him. He had a drainage question about some property, close to county property. So I think we'll, I think it's a very easy fix. And also, I'd like to comment, I got the opportunity to go to Washington, D.C. last week, and just like to say thank you for allowing us to go. I think Commissioners Pless and Commissioners Rogers also got to go. But we actually went to the National Association of Counties at 10:00 a.m. in Washington, D.C., and they had several talking points, and we went to the White House, some issues to bring up. And I know broadband's been a big question in our county. We have some very difficult terrain. That is high on the priority list at the federal level and the state level. And as you know, there's, there's been a lot of, a lot of questions about it, and a lot of people wanting to, you know, for us to try to increase our speed and our coverage of the county. So I think the local newspaper, Mr. Valencourt, he had contacted us earlier, and I'd forward him some information about it. But that's on, that's on top of the list, actually number three. And there was another priority for promoting county infrastructure needs and promoting mental health, treatment for substance use disorders, and criminal justice reform. Those were three of the things that were on the front burner, and we got to discuss a lot of the issues with people at the federal level and made some great contacts. So it was a very productive trip. Personally, on a personal note, I got a very, very pleasant surprise. A girl is my daughter's best friend from kindergarten, right on through Ashton Saunders. Her parents are house parents over at Royal Hill Children's Home. And my daughter said, "Look her up while you're in Washington. She works in the Department of Agriculture." So, okay. Sent her a text. She said, "Come on over if you got a federal, if you got an ID, come on over." So we had to go through all this security to get in the Department of Agriculture. Got up there, and she is the White House liaison from the Department of Agriculture to the White House. And she gave me her card and said, "If you've got any problems or any needs back in your state," she said, "The federal guy in Raleigh that works with Steve Troxer," she said, "I hired him. So just call me if you need any, any, any help." So I think that'd be a great contact for Haywood County. Haywood County, she's a product of Haywood County Schools, and she has, I asked her, I said, "Well, girl, you've arrived." She's on the third floor of the agricultural building overlooking the National Mall, if you've ever been to Washington, D.C. And she said, "I don't know if I've arrived yet." So I said, "Hey, keep climbing that ladder if you want to keep going." So it's a great personal touch there on our trip, and she is in a very high level of government. So Haywood County should be proud.
I mean, that's good. Brandon?
Just to echo what Commissioner Long said, we did get to go to Washington, the second, second time I've been able to go. And as Tommy pointed out, we get to make a lot of good contacts that's on the federal level, and I appreciate that. Tommy has a copy of a list there, we all do, but he brought his tonight, it looks like. But we have some contacts on the federal level that we can pick up the phone and call if it has to do with agriculture or whatever it has to do with and speak to someone directly. Whether they listen or not may be a different story, but at least we can call and speak with them about our issues here on the county level or on the local level. And I think that was probably one of the biggest takeaways that I had from our trip. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to go. Like I said, second time I've been, had a good time both times, and it's just neat. It's not every day that you get invited to go up to Washington or the White House. So we had a good time, and again, thank you. And if there's anybody out there, even watching on TV, that has any issues, that we can contact those folks on a federal level, then we can do that.
No, I don't have any.
Not sure how many people in the audience are aware. And this is something I've gotten phone calls on for quite some time this last week. I know Haywood County approved cell consumption of alcohol outside the city limits, but the Fair Board decided to do that at the fair this year for Haywood County. And I believe the people were short-changed, and they weren't given an opportunity to make any input whatsoever into that decision. It's been a family event for years. It has been shielded from a lot of the things that happen in this county. And to short-change the people that are going to participate is bad. But the sponsors were also not told. I think that should have been mentioned before they paid and before they agreed to commit. I don't like that being done. I'm not happy at all with the fairgrounds, but everything that I have been told so far is I can't do anything about it. I would like, if there's a way for us to do something about it, to put it to the agenda and to be able to address it and hopefully try to give the people an input, because that's what we're here for, is to give you an input into how you want your county run. That's it.
Thanks. Thanks, Mark. And I will say on the visit to the, to the White House, Brandon and I got to go in March of '18, and that was the first time that, and I've been a commissioner for, this is my 15th year, but that was the first time we'd ever been asked by the White House to go. In fact, when we got the invitation, when Brandon and I got the invitation, I, you get these emails all the time, and I just thought it was some fake email. So we called the national, the county, the North Carolina County Commission Association, and they were, they didn't know, they didn't know anything about it, but they said, "No, it is true." And it is, that is the White House that has contacted you. So, but this is the first administration that has reached out to the local people, the local elected officials now, and they want, I think, city council and county commissioners. So they're going to the grassroots to ask if we needed help. And I know when we went, when Brandon and I went last time, we got a list, and I was able to share that with some of our agencies, and they were able to contact the people that make the rules, if you will, and gave them a contact. So I know if anybody, I know y'all have that list too, so if anybody out there needs maybe some help, they can contact some of the commissioners, and we might have a number that we can give you to reach the people that make the decisions that might can affect an outcome for you. So, but that was, I thought that was pretty good. So...
Kevin, I know this is going to be a long meeting, but can I add something? Kind of, they say laughter is the best medicine. I reckon you'll live longer if you can laugh. But we went to the National Association of Counties, and we had Tennessee and South Carolina in there with North Carolina. There was probably, what, close to 100 people in there? And there was this little timid county commissioner from Tennessee, and they had these huge glass doors, if you can picture, huge glass doors with like a big brass handle on it. She broke that thing. I'm not kidding. She, she just, it just broke. It come out of her hand. And while everybody was, she was embarrassed naturally, and when everybody was introducing herself, I told her, I said, "Ma'am, it's a good thing you're from Tennessee, and we've got all these Tennesseans in here. You'll have plenty of volunteers to help you fix that when this meeting's over." So anyway, that was a live moment, but it was a very productive meeting. We had made good contacts.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. Okay, our next order of business is administrative agency reports and presentations. And I've asked Dr. Nolte from the Haywood County Schools to give us a presentation on their Educational Support Center. So we have our superintendent, Dr. Bill Nolte, and we have the associate superintendent, Dr. Trevor Putnam, here tonight. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. First of all, I want to publicly thank Bryant Morehead, your manager, for keeping us abreast as much as he could of the tax credit or incentive, not sure of the right terminology there, that was pending for the building that we've occupied since 1980. And he notified us shortly before the public announcement and indicated that he thought that was what was going to happen. And so I appreciate that heads up. Also, want to thank you for already hearing about our dreams and our ideas way back in January. We came to you all and presented a plan for the Educational Support Center. We know that you all probably don't know that plan as much as we do. We, we worked on it for several months. Almost all of our board members are here. We worked on that prior to Christmas last year, and we knew at some point in time there would be an opportunity for us to move, and it looks like that's going to happen in two Decembers from now. And, but our plan really is about not two Decembers from now, but from an infrastructure standpoint, what's the most efficient and effective way, not only in terms of cost, but in terms of operation, to work on old, failing administrative infrastructure in the system. And so Kevin talked to us about possibly coming tonight and just sharing the plan again. Again, because we know it inside out, we've worked on it for a really long time, but you all got to see it briefly many months ago. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Dr. Putnam and let him review the plan again. I made some paper copies, but I know you also have access digitally, and I'll give some paper copies to media or other people in the office, in the audience, rather. And then I'll come back when Trevor is finished, and hopefully we can answer your questions. So again, thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for keeping us up to speed on what was occurring as much as you could.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you again on my behalf as well for this opportunity. We greatly appreciate it. What I hope to present to you is our Educational Support Center plan. This plan is, we, we hope to be very comprehensive. It addresses many of the needs we have throughout our school system, and I hope it promotes overall more efficient operations day to day. And the goal of it is... And the goal of it is, we have training centers all over the place. When we schedule a professional development or a training for our teachers, telling them where to go, that's, that's quite the task. It's at the conference center. Is that the Hazelwood Conference Center or is that the one in Clyde? Is that the old Clyde School? Is that the old Hazelwood? So they have many names. I'll try to be clear as to what's changing or what would change should this plan come to fruition as I move through. So this is as concise a document as I could make that details all the changes that would occur. So former Hazelwood, also known as Hazelwood Conference Center, also known as Folkmoog, okay? Has many names, but it's the old Hazelwood School. Currently, we have fourteen exceptional child support staff offices on that campus, as well as our largest training room occupies that campus as well. And you can't see the arrows, they're not showing up real well, but basically there's a down arrow. It's all funneling to the educational support center. So all of that would move to the educational support center. Then you look at Central Haywood. From Central Haywood, the boardroom would move to the educational support center. A note, side note about our boardroom, currently our kids, when we recognize them, which is the best part of the board meeting and what we really want to do upright, many of the kids have to stand outside or down a hallway and the parents, they have to wait their turn to go in and snap pictures and there's not adequate seating. So we've grossly outgrown our current boardroom. So this would move to the educational support center, as well as our ITC, which sits in a floodway. And that's where our main server for all of our schools in the county are fed from, from that main server. And then Crabtree, we would move child nutrition. It's out on a property, it's the old Crabtree School. And we pay about $6,000 a month in internet costs, just to provide internet to that facility. It's a metal structure and it would serve us well to have it moved to the educational support center. And then our current central office. We have offices there, training and meeting rooms and record storage. And all of this would migrate its way to the educational support center. So what does it look like? There are other changes occurring. Since there are so many pieces to this puzzle, I thought it best to go through site by site exactly what's changing at each of these sites. And so I'll start with Central Haywood High School. We would, if you'll remember, we had to demolition due to flooding, we had to demolition the gym across the river from Central Haywood. So currently, Central Haywood is without a gym. This plan would propose converting the current boardroom to a gym, which it was at one time, converting it to a gym for Central Haywood. So those kids can have PE, inclement weather days or any type of indoor sports activities that they would need to engage in. This would move the instructional technology center to the educational support center. Currently, it's housed on the second floor at Central Haywood High School, but it would come to the educational support center. So all of it is in one central location. And by doing so, we would move the alternative learning center, also known as HCLC. We would move that to the vacated ITC space at Central Haywood. In doing so, that will eliminate some duplication in positions and staffing required operating in two separate locations. And then we would move to the two training rooms and a boardroom to the educational support center. So that's what happens at Central Haywood. That is also, and I'll point all these things out later in one succinct slide, but essentially by converting that boardroom, we save the cost of building back another gym at, at a cost of roughly five million, 5.1 million. And you're building it back in a floodplain. Crabtree property, as we mentioned, that's where currently our child nutrition is out on the old Crabtree School. We would want that onsite for meal prep and centralized services at the educational support center. And then at the former Hazelwood Elementary, AKA Folkmoog, Hazelwood Conference Center, as mentioned before, we would move the alternative learning center to Central Haywood, move our largest training room to the educational support center, and we would move fourteen exceptional child support staff to the educational support center. So once that occurs, essentially what you have there is a surplus property at the old Hazelwood School. It's my understanding that Folkmoog, well, they expressed an interest to me, I'm not sure if they've expressed that to you, they are looking to expand what, what they're doing. And so that would, this move would facilitate that. And then Central Elementary, kind of the elephant in the room for many years. We believe we're going to need Central Elementary School. We need to maintain that as an elementary school option for anticipated growth in student That's a very conservative 400 residential units projected. Just in general talking terms, I think Plock Creek is around 200 to 210. Bilo Shopping Center, and again, these are all in planning phases. I don't, I don't have hard numbers for those, but anticipating another 200 there. And, and another, in speaking with some town folks, Allen's Creek, he just said, a lot. So I don't know what a lot is, but in, in the, in a way of numbers, but more units. And so if you look at that and say, let's say you end up with 600 units and a third of them have a single kid, you're looking at a, a need for 200, space for 200 more In looking at our current elementary schools, that being Hazelwood and Junealuska who absorb the additional students at Central. As y'all well know, you can, you can rate occupancy any way you want. You know, if you, you can work the numbers a couple of different ways. What I can tell you is, if you look at the intended use of the building when it was designed and planned, is it currently being used in that way? No. Lots of rooms have been, had to be converted due to additional support staff that are Many times at Hazelwood and Junealuska, and it's not just unique to those schools, it's public education in general, mental health was not a consideration, mental health staff was not a consideration. And now there's need for mental health staff, additional exceptional children's staff to work with kids one-on-one. There's just been an influx. Public education is being asked to do more and more with kids in the way of support services and we're happy to do so, we just need the space. So that said, you're probably looking at occupancy at 90-plus percent in use and I think that's a pretty conservative percentage at both those schools, at Hazelwood and Junealuska. So there are the numbers in the way of this data was collected, collected in January of 2019 and I won't stand here and read those to you. This was shared with you ahead of time. As well as House Bill 13, not sure what's going to happen with that, but proposed maximum class size requirement will take the numbers down. Eighteen will be the maximum allowable and, and you correct me if I'm wrong on this, Dr. Nolte. Kindergarten and first grade, is that correct? Is that correct?
It's K3.
K3, K3, so even worse. So you can see there's a need for an elementary school option. So what does the educational support center provide? What's it going to do? It provides for integrated instructional support services, kind of one-stop shopping, the Walmart of public education where teachers can come to one centralized location. If they have need for health benefits, an explanation of that. If they need to fill out paperwork, if they need to come to a training, they'll come to one location. And the next thing is, it creates a needed training space for teachers and staff. A lot of times we will have to break professional development up over days, which is costly because then we have to pay that person to stay overnight to accommodate the number of teachers that are receiving that training. We just recently did that with Max Thompson and so that gets costly. Whereas if we had a large enough facility to accommodate more teachers, we're likely to get it done in a day. It maintains Central Elementary for potential growth in student population, eliminates the need to replace Central Haywood Gym, because if you'll remember, we're converting the current boardroom into a gym or PE space. Allows us to completely vacate the former Hazelwood Crabtree property and current central office. It provides office space for current central office and exceptional child support staff. It reduces maintenance, repairs and replacement costs at those three surplus properties, provides an integrated hub for training, meetings and onsite instructional technology support. Reduces the amount of breakdown and setup time for trainings and meetings. And just a few numbers to that, we, we pay out at 55 cents a mile, which I think that just went up, is for 4,735 miles, miles a year. We also lose 135 hours in drive time that they are not being productive on the job. They're having to drive to these different locations for setup and breakdown. It streamlines scheduling and allows for onsite food preparation and serves as a recruitment tool for teachers by offering a 21st century training facility. How nice would it be for Haywood County to host training events or professional development from other counties and for them to come into a really nice facility to do that training with our teachers? And I think it sends a really clear, strong message that education's important, the best training for our teachers is important, making sure we provide the best instruction to our kids as possible. So here are the specifications for the educational support center. Five acres of usable land. In the way of land, we're really just looking at land, we haven't looked at any, but considerations are property that is on or near or close to 1923 I-40 corridors for easy on and easy off, quick access to schools all across our county. Training and meeting space in the equivalent of 9,000 square feet. Instructional technology center, the office, the lab, the server and the storage, 10,000 square feet. Support staff space, 8,750 square feet. Child nutrition office space, 1,000 square feet. Dry storage, cooler and freezer, 9,000 square feet. Exceptional child support staff, that's the folks that were at the Hazelwood Conference Center or old Hazelwood School, 5,000 square feet. Total space, 42,750 square feet. And then educational support center future considerations, again, I put this in, you know, I, I don't know if, this is not an ask on our part as far as the school system, but I've learned that, you know, if you want someone to hear you, you must first listen to them. I don't know if this is a need of the county, but if we were to need to vacate our current location for maintenance and transportation, here are the specs on that, six acres of usable land for maintenance, 15,000 square feet, a lawnmower shop at 4,500 square feet, welding and carpentry shop at 5,000 square feet and transportation, 15,000 square feet, for a total of 39,500 square feet. Okay. And again, that's not an ask on our part, that's if we, y'all needed us to vacate our current location for maintenance and transportation. So really big number, really big number. Total space needed, and this is just for the educational support center, 42,750 square feet, cost estimate of 12.6 million dollars. Okay? We, we realize that's a large number, but it is far less than this number. The alternative is trying to piecemeal or à la carte, all of our needs back out. Central Haywood Gym and Shop Class to build that back, 5.1 million. So to replace that, a new elementary school, average cost is about 27 million for a school the size of Central Elementary. It would need a gym at a cost of 3.9 million, which the Central Elementary property has a gym. And office and meeting space, 3.6 million, for a total of 39.6 million. So you can see that a lot of issues are resolved in one centralized, integrated support services plan, that being our educational support center plan. We feel that it's, will promote more efficient operations in the ways I listed in the PowerPoint. We feel that it is looking on down the road, it's looking what our needs are going to be in four, five, 10, 15 years. It's hard to predict with 100% certainty, you know, is this all we will ever need? I doubt it. Is it for the near future? That's the way it looks, you know, outside of a catastrophic event or a huge spike in population, but it does account for all known factors in front of us right now. And it looks as just as far into the future, given the information we have, as we can possibly look. So at this time, I'll entertain, oh, he has a comment.
I'm sorry, not trying to extend the meeting, but just a couple, just a couple thoughts. Some, again, we realize we're much more familiar with this than you are. You saw a little blip back in January. So just a couple other explanations. For example, we had training all last week and we have training throughout the year when, when things change. We have a new reading assessment program coming down from the state that's going to take a lot of training. So if we're doing a training at the conference center in Hazelwood, that's our biggest location and if, so if we put 100 people down there, say we're going to train kindergarten, first and second grade in a reading assessment, we can squeeze 100 in there. And so what has to happen is literally several people have to leave our office, they have to go down there, take supplies, materials, usually the day before, if it's a morning meeting, set up for that meeting and the people who are setting up. So that's the time that they're losing driving and mileage that we're paying them to drive their vehicle. And then we have the meeting and then the, the evening after the meeting or the next day, they're doing the same thing. They do that every time we have a school board meeting. They drive, Brooke and, and other folks drive down to Clyde, they put all the stuff out, they set up. If it's going to be one of those long nights where we start around four with the board members and keep them there till late and we feed them a sandwich, then someone has to, you know, school food service has to bring the sandwich. We spend a lot of time being inefficient and ineffective. So that's just an example. The square footage that we're asking for is not measurably different than what we have right now. We're not asking for a large increase in size and space. We're trying to capture all the space that we currently have in Crabtree, in, in Hazelwood, in, in our current office, at, near Central Haywood High School where the board meeting is. We're just trying to consolidate it. So it's not, I didn't want anyone to get the impression that, you know, we want twice as much as we have now in terms of size. We do not. We do not. The other thing that I wanted to say before we entertain any questions is, I think the imminent move to December from now, that's just, we understand that, that has to happen, and we have to work very cooperatively with you to pull that off, and we will. I mean, that's our commitment. But what we're hoping and what we're asking for is a simultaneous plan to make us efficient in terms of our administrative infrastructure for the next twenty or thirty years or more, maybe longer than that. And if you'll look at those numbers, we can do that for about twelve, whatever the percent, the point was up there, million. That did not include the land, because when we, when we built the plan, we thought, well, we might end up on the property that we're on right now. We didn't know how the tax incentives or breaks were going to go. So it would be a number pretty close to that area. We, we think that number's pretty accurate, plus property. And then depending upon when we need Central Elementary School, you're talking about another three million there. That's still about half what it's going to cost to fix all the other problems over five or ten years, one at a time. So we're, we're, we're ready to, to move in a couple Decembers, and we'll work with you to get that figured out. But what we're asking for is to make us efficient and effective in terms of not spending more money than we need to over the next ten years or so, and to leave our children and maybe even our grandchildren, educational infrastructure that we won't have to fool with. It'll be there, and it will be in good shape for some time. So thank you for allowing us this time, especially on short notice, and we'll try to entertain any questions that you have.
Any commissioners have any questions?
Did, did you say, what, what did you say the cost of the internet at Crabtree was?
I think, I was gonna, I think that's thirty-eight and not six. I don't want to, I didn't want to correct him in front of the crowd.
Thirty-eight a month?
But he was think, using a lot of numbers. We use a second provider.
Thirty-eight hundred dollars a month.
Well, I'll double check that for you. We use a second provider, which is very costly. Again, if we were all in, we're all in one spot, and we were near the connection, high-speed connection, that would pull all that into one building, and we wouldn't be trying to pay for it in three or four locations.
Right. I'm assuming by the fact that most of the board members are here, that it's been discussed and supported by the, the board.
We'll let you nod, but yes, they, they actually, we discussed the plan several times in public work sessions and, and in other public meetings, and they unanimously endorsed the plan, and we had them do that or asked them to do that before we brought the plan to you last January.
I know one of the, the things that we talked about earlier, and I'd, I'd asked at the previous meeting, was the, the support. Have you, have you kind of tested or got an idea, the support of the, of the teachers for this particular facility?
Well, we, we have tried very much not to get ahead. Trevor and I, you know, we work for the board, and, and we tried, we've tried not to get ahead of, of any of the boards, the, our board or the commissioners. After we shared the plan with you all in January, and we've talked about it at some of our meetings, the feedback that I've received has been very positive. It's certainly not going to have the kind of momentum that you have when you build a new Bethel Elementary School, but I do think they understand the efficiency and effectiveness. And I'm sure they would, you know, with any large project, you have people who ask difficult questions, and they should ask those, and we may have some opposition, but I have, I've not heard that yet.
Well, I, I tell you this, I do appreciate the fact that you, that there's been a lot of thought that's gone into this and the different facilities that you have and, and the costs to support those different facilities. And I mean, I think it's a well-thought-out plan. I, you know, I don't know the, the taste of the community, of the complete support of it at this point in time, but I, I will say that you've done your homework in trying to anticipate certain issues that are, that are forthcoming and, and how to answer those. I think another question I'd had before is, as far as other educational support centers in, in the state, I mean, is there some model that you've gone after? Is this something that, that you all have kind of thought up because of the, of the, of the factual scenario that we have here, or?
It was created from scratch, however, in, in trying to, to develop a plan. We did locate one. Wake County has just this very thing. So, you know, it, it's cutting-edge thinking, I guess you would say. It's not yet become widespread, but many folks are beginning to think about this type of thing, because the beauty of it is, when you think about a singular building, how does that really save you? Well, it has one roof. It has four walls, and, you know, you begin to maintain a whole lot less. You're also not spreading out your staff to various locations. You're also, there's not as much mowing that goes with it. I mean, it just incrementally adds up to a, a huge change in efficiency, an increase in efficiency when you, you centralize things.
Have you, have you looked at the numbers enough to take the operational cost of the buildings that you have now? Because once you build a new building, and unfortunately, or fortunately or unfortunately, we've built a few in the last seventeen years. And so what I've learned is that when you build a building, and it's a good-sized building, it's going to cost to maintain that building as well. And so I, I assume that, that you factored in the cost of the maintenance of this new building, because it, it will, you, you're going to get rid of some maintenance costs, but you're going to incur some new ones as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely. The thing you get with new, with new structure, new construction is more energy efficiency, which will save you in utilities. If you're looking at it from a return on investment standpoint, a, a project this size, no, you, you would never save it back in utility costs, but you do, over time, create, eliminate waste. You know, the need to operate heating and air continues to exist, the need to have lights continues, the need to replace roofs continues to exist, but you eliminate a lot of waste.
I, I would add, and obviously, we've had lots of conversations about this, and you've all just, you're, only your second opportunity to really take a look at it. But, you know, we're, we're excited about having everything consolidated for all the reasons that we've already stated, but we're also excited about having facilities that we really don't have a use for, and would hope that, you know, through the process, you guys, which have first offer on disposal, or someone else might want it. We have a, a whole large area where the old Clyde Gymnasium used to sit. And from a practical standpoint, the school system does not have use for that. But we do mow, you know, and we go over there and, and do other things, try to keep it fenced and things like that. Same thing at Crabtree. Other than our sportsman club going down there and shooting in that old gym sometime, we have the, we, we just have a metal school food service building down there, and it's exciting to us to, to think about the fact, well, we would not need that. We just really wouldn't need it for anything that we're thinking of right now. And certainly at Hazelwood, we're on the far end in the conference center, which is basically the old library, and the county, the county uses the gymnasium, which, and we're glad of that for the most part. And then we're also on the other end of Folk Moot in the Alternative Learning Center, the HCLC, and the old daycare where we house our EC specialists, people like OTs and PTs and speech language and folks like that, that we have, we're required to have and need to have. So the idea that we would not need all of those spaces, we know will save us some money. We may consume that money in a new building, but it would certainly be good for us not to have to maintain all those locations.
I've got a question on the, I run some numbers. You might as well say you need just about an acre under the roof. I mean, you're so close to having an acre there. But the numbers come out, if my smartphone right here is as smart as I think it is, it's about two-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars a square foot on construction costs. Is that a pretty firm number, or?
That was a, that was taken from a year ago, and a lot of general contractors go to forecasters who predict, you know, what it's going to cost two years out. So that, there's, there's projection in that. We won't know until y'all give us the nod and let us build, so. But that's, that is as accurate or best a number we can anticipate the cost per square foot.
I mean, I, I see numbers come by. We're just doing a, we just had to deal with a nursing building over at HCC, seven-point-two million, and all those numbers, you know, they kind of correlate as far as building per square foot. And I was just wondering if that was, you know, how firm that was.
It, it was the best we could do, and Trevor and Joe, you know, several people did that work, but we, you know, we looked at space and talked to contractors and talked to builders. Obviously, we felt better about that number last, last year at Christmas, you know, right before, or right when our board was saying that, that they wanted to, to proceed with a plan like this, if it was possible, and then present it to you. And I think the further you get away from it, the greater chance there's going to be that a number would change, but we felt pretty good about that number when it was created.
Couple other questions, just for my information. How many classrooms do you think you could have down at the old Central Elementary? How many students could you house there if this building forecast holds true, and you get an influx of students coming in? What's the capacity on that?
You got about twenty classrooms, fifteen to twenty classrooms. There, and I can speak, having been the principal at Central Elementary, we, we, we maintained fifteen teachers.
Okay. Well, Kevin and I have been in some meetings where it's been discussed about this new thing coming out of Raleigh on classroom size, and it's causing a lot of county governments all over the state to have a pause, because west of here, you know, you have some small communities where they have thirty and thirty-two kids in a classroom. They get a new state mandate come down, they're going to have to go to their citizens and build a whole new, whole new classroom, because the, the size of that classroom's been reduced. So it, it's going to be a huge economic situation probably for some of these smaller counties especially. But that's kind of a moving target until we get a definitive answer on that, right?
That's correct.
The, I will, I will say that that House Bill did pass, and it, it is current law.
Oh, it is.
For example, our class size maximum K three for many years was twenty-four, and I know that because I did allotments for many years, rejected teacher allotments. Then it went to twenty-three, and this year it's twenty-two, because I was talking to Jill about some, Jill Barker, who does allotments now about some questionable sizes. And so that has moved down by two, which doesn't sound like much, but you take two off every, every first grade class or third grade class in the county, and then sometimes that gives you another classroom, especially at a smaller school. Okay? Because you can spread those one or two over four classes, you have a little more room. You just had two or three classes, you don't have as much room. So the number, that, that House Bill did pass, and the class size has come down, maximum class size in K three, from twenty-four to twenty-two.
One other thing, this Educational Support Center for future considerations, is that what we commonly refer to as the bus garage?
Yes, that, that, we just put in there for information, and I want to repeat something that I said back in January, and again, I made that presentation. I don't really expect you all to remember that, it was a one-time presentation. We would not want that part of the information to prevent us from moving forward on the Educational Support Center. The other six acres and space is really, if we had to do something with the current maintenance and transportation. I've met with Bryant and, and other folks, and it, there seems to be a very good plan there in place to make some improvements, and, you know, right now it looks good. You know, we've talked about how we will reroute some roads and things over time, but, you know, we're not asking for that, that's just there for your information.
Yeah. I've got a couple of questions as well. I, I know that we talked about the ROI last time when we had our workshop, and I know we're not going to get, get that number, but I, I would be interested in knowing what number, what the value is on what we would save. You know, I know that, take the internet, for example, or the wasted time with the travel and all that. It, it would be interesting to me to see what we would save by consolidating or moving all this to one place. I know that might be a little tough to get, but I think it'd be important for us to look at that. Along with, another question I had is on the alternative worksheet that you had in here, I'm not sure that I understand all these numbers, Dr. Putnam. If you don't mind briefly go through these, I mean, is this stuff that we're going to have to have if, if we don't do this?
I'm going to make sure we're on the right slide here. Here?
That's it, yeah.
The, currently, we do not have a gym for Central Haywood. We need one. And if, if you don't move the boardroom out, you know, to, and, and, and we don't proceed with Educational Support Center, we're going to have to build a gym.
But that's going to happen either way. I mean, we're going to have to have it.
You're not building a new footprint. That's where the savings comes in. You're literally going inside an existing building and creating a gym space inside an existing building. The other advantage of that is our kids don't have to walk across the bridge, across the river, to a remote area, and at that point, we're also not putting lighting, you know, having to light that. So it puts it on the same side, and, but it's basically where our current boardroom is. That's the gym, so we eliminate the need for that. And then the new elementary school, you know, if, you know, it was decided that we went to Central Elementary as a central office option, my fear is we would, we would turn around and need it. Based on all the, all the data that I see right now, all the numbers, all the residential units coming in, the House Bill and other things, we're very likely to need an elementary school. And as I said, we're at ninety-plus percent. You, you can look at occupancy a couple different ways, but I think it's very safe and conservative to say ninety-plus percent right now as it stands. And then office and meeting space, that's us, central office.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I know that, I guess that's what I was looking at, and I wasn't sure on this other stuff, if it's stuff we would have to have, but you guys having to move out of that office space that you're in now. So thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir.
And would it be, I mean, is it going to cause you too much grief to get us a number put together, to see what wasteful spending we have now?
We'll give you our best guess. It's hard to really know until you put it in play. Like, how many, how many staff members would you lose or save on by putting the Adult Learning Center in the top of Central Haywood? Hard to know. You know, how many combo or combination teachers might you be able to utilize? Half the day you're with the Adult Learning Center, half the day. That said, I'll give you my best guess. Absolutely. I'd be happy to put that together.
Thank you.
Mark, you got anything? I was wondering, your teacher training, is that mandated by the state and federal?
Yes.
Governments?
Let me talk about.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, we're required to renew our license, just like other people with a license, you have to have continuing education units and add those. So in order to renew our license, we have to have a certain number of continuing education credits, and some of those you can get by getting in a car and driving to Greensboro and staying in a hotel and going to a conference, which is a lot more expensive than doing it here. So we're, you know, we're required to have those credits. I just renewed my license last summer, and so there's some of that that you have to do in various areas, everything from literacy to digital learning, it just depends on your license and what's required. The other thing that we like to do, and we think it has really helped us with performance, is we have some things called frameworks. It's not a step-by-step. Uh, it's not a step-by-step robotic process, but we have some instructional methods that we train our people with consistently. So every year, when we have new teachers come in, um, we'll have workshops on biology or Math 1 or English 2, or at the elementary level, uh, we'll have trainings in things that we call balanced literacy, um, or, uh, and math, conceptual math things. So we do a lot of training and we, we don't lose as many people as we used to, but we do turnover 30 or 40 people a year. Um, I think our average turnover rate, I talked to Mr. Heinz the other days, around 11%. That's pretty good, but it's still 11% of a lot of teachers. And so we have those trainings all the time. The Conference Center in Hazelwood is really the only place where we can get more than one grade level in. Uh, the, the boardroom, um, is going to hold about 45 or 50 people max jammed in there, packed in there. So you might get two grade levels in there. We have 30 at the elementary level, 30-plus teachers per grade level. And so it's the only place to do a large training. Moving that to an educational support center, that, that space could double as a boardroom. So you really don't need two rooms to do those things. You have a big training room and then you also use it as a boardroom. So, but yeah, lots of, of required training for licensure renewal, and then we do a lot of training. I think our folks will tell you that there's not a lot that goes on that's new that they don't have access to.
Anybody have any other questions? Hey, Brian, you had mentioned maybe we could, uh, maybe have a committee made up of...
This, this is a big project, so we probably need to get together with school staff fairly quickly to start talking about the logistics of, of site selection and alternatives to buildings, things like that. So, you know, typically I would say that myself, maybe, uh, Chris with his facilities knowledge and Dr. Snolte and Putnam get together, uh, and start brainstorming, uh, about possibilities.
Okay. Maybe your finance folks too.
Of course.
Cause I know Julie knows how much we got coming in and when things were getting paid off and things like that, so maybe, maybe have them available and stuff, so.
We'll, we'll make ourselves available whenever you want to meet.
Can I buy lunch?
Okay. Can we, can we take that out of this 12-point, uh, some million dollars?
That's going to come out of my pocket.
Now, we, we have still one obstacle to overcome, right? Uh, Landmark still has to make the final say. I mean, we're, we're 95% there on divesting the old hospital and, and all that, but they still haven't signed the final.
I, I think they have until September 15th to exercise the option, but...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. We know this was an extended time, but we are very appreciative to have it. Thank you.
We, we know this is happening quickly and we want to try to stay on top of it, so we appreciate y'all coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for the rest of those folks too. I see a lot of support back there.
Thank you.
Yeah, just for the, the record, I, I think we have about all the school board members here, so I see a lot of teachers and other staff. Okay, our next administrative agency reports is the IVA Health Physical Monitoring Report for the year ended in June 30th, 2019, and we have our Finance Director Julie Davis to update us on that.
I'm bringing you this report on a quarterly basis like I have done. Um, it is required by statute. And if you want to flip to the fiscal monitoring report, that is in your packet through June 30th, 2019, this is the end of their fiscal year. Their revenues came in at, uh, 423,326,558. And on down closer to the, uh, toward the bottom of the page, their total expenditures, For a total net loss, and this is a loss for the year of $7,604,329. And they have also attached for you to, um, look at as an explanation for their cash and for their fund balance, some additional information, um, that explains some of these, uh, numbers that they're very high numbers and they explain why they're so high and why they actually can't spend all that money.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Or Julie? Okay. Thank you, Julie. Okay, next item of, of our agenda is the discussion adjustment to the agenda. Does anyone have anything? I don't have anything.
Frank could tell me if he got the answer, if it would be beneficial.
Give me a, a little while longer. I'm going to go through the file right now.
Okay. I'll just put that as item number six at the, uh, okay? Under regular agenda.
What's, what is that? What's, what's?
He wants to discuss the fire grants.
Alcohol, alcohol fire grant.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I'm going to go through our consent agenda at this time. That's the next item of our business, the first, that's the next order of our business. And the first item is to request approval of the July 15th, 2019 regular meeting minutes. The second is to request approval of renewed, renewal of billing services agreement with EMS management and consultants for ambulance billing. That's under attachment five. Third item, uh, request approval of contract with McGill Associates for ongoing solid waste operations in the amount of $25,000 to be paid from budgeted funds. That's attachment six. The fourth item is to request approval of budget amendments for fiscal year 1819 from the General Fund Education in the amount of $12,000 to appropriate the amount of the additional ABC revenues that just came in for the last quarter of fiscal year 19 in order to pay 50% to the school system, and that's under attachment seven. And then we have fiscal year 19 and 20, and the first one is the General Fund, the Sheriff's Office is $165,518 to appropriate the second year of funding for the COPS grant, and that's under attachment eight. The next is the General Fund Public Safety Grants of $320,044 to appropriate the amount of the arrest grant that will be available this fiscal year. That's attachment nine. Uh, next is from the General Fund, HHSA Health, it's the WIC program, $10,534 to appropriate the grant revenue to cover equipment and supplies for the WIC program, and that's attachment 10. Okay. Does anyone have any questions or need any clarifications on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Anyone, I see all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, next, uh, next, uh, order of business is a regular agenda, and our first item of business is to request approval of naming a private road as Nightshade Lane, and we have our addressing coordinator Nancy Hogan here to just describe that. And from time to time, we have these road names where she sends out to the, to name a road and, and the people don't respond and, uh, which usually if I get something and I don't respond, then I'm okay with it. It's the way I look at it. But anyway, our ordinance says she has to come to us to, uh, to ask for that to be approved. So Nancy, if you want to just kind of let, let us know kind of what you, what you've done.
Sure. Good evening, gentlemen. Um, approximately back the beginning of May, mid of May, before I took this position, there was a Mr. Wong Gonzalez who had purchased some property, um, down close, I guess in the White Oak area, um, in the Shelton Laurel Road and the Elderberry Lane Road area. And previously, there had just been a driveway to a property below his. Um, so now he's wanting to put a house on his property, and based on our approval of road, new road names, if there are two structures on a road, it cannot be just a driveway any longer for 911 purposes. It has to be an actual road. His proposal for the road name was Nightshade Lane. Um, when there's a proposal for a new road name, we have to contact all of the bordering property owners, whether they plan on using that road or not. That is what is listed in the Approval New Road Names statute. Um, we sent them letters, not we, I didn't, but there were two sets of letters sent to these property owners. There was no response from any of them. Um, well, except for Mr. Gonzalez, of course, because he has one vote. And I take that back, there was one other property owner, Mr. Yoder Clark, who signed saying that he would agree, but that didn't equal 65% of the property owners that bordered this proposed road. So therefore I had to come before you to see if Nightshade Lane could be approved as the road name so that Mr. Wong Gonzalez can have an official address for 911 purposes as well as to start construction on his home.
Okay. And, and Nancy just has taken over that position that was, uh, vacated by Miranda Stewart, I believe was her last name, that, that left and went to work for Buckingham County. So we lost an, an addressing coordinator, so, um, so does anyone have any questions for Nancy?
I do. Uh, I think, if I understand this right, the reason you're here before us is because you didn't get a response from 65 or more percent of the people. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
How many people total are there that's affected by this? You know? Just four?
Really, there's only one, um, resident, and they're actually Florida residents, so they're not here all the time, that is actually going to be affected by this new road name. Their address is going to have to change. When you look at this map, this house right here presently has a 911 address of 168 Elderberry Lane. So this was considered basically their driveway. Now that Mr. Wong Gonzalez has purchased this property up here and is going to put a structure, if 911 were to be called to try to find, let's say, I'm just going to throw a number out there, 199 Elderberry Lane, they get right here, it's kind of confusing. We're in a hurry. It's an emergency. Which house is it? Do I go up this drive? You know? So now, to make it easier and more clear, you have an actual road with two structures on it, and oh, that's the one I got to go to because it's on Nightshade Lane. It's not a sidebar or whatever of Elderberry Lane, a long drive.
Do we have a way of knowing or confirming that they received these letters? I mean, do they have to sign for it or?
Um, the only way that you know is if they sign and send it back. As far as I know, from what I've been told, we don't send them certified return receipts, anything like that. You're just assuming that because they haven't been returned to you for some reason, um, where the post office has put it, non-deliverable or something like that. You're assuming that they received it and they've either looked at it, don't care, not going to respond.
That, that's what I would think, but again, I'm just trying to be cautious. I know that having to change your address on everything can be, uh, very time-consuming and aggravating, you know? So I'm just trying to make sure, so thank you.
No, no.
So the, the person whose home is on, that's going to be changed, their address is going to be changed, have they responded?
No. They didn't respond.
Do we know if they've been contacted, that they received their notification?
Now that, I don't know. I know it was mailed out, whether they received it in Florida or not, because that is where the tax record, the address that's on the tax record on the property parcel.
Where they get their tax bill, and I bet they pay the taxes.
I'm assuming they've paid their taxes. Um, I'm assuming that they received their letter, but I cannot confirm that.
And we've got 50% of them, so. So if, if just one more had signed, it'd be 75, and she wouldn't have to come before us.
How long ago was it sent to them?
Um, okay, so let me go back in the notes since I was not the one who previously did this. Hold on just a minute.
I, I wouldn't have a concern if the people who, whose address is being changed had responded, but, just so they know.
Okay, appears to me that letters, the first batch of letters were sent out approximately May the 15th, May the 14th. Um, there was no response. So then again, on May the 30th, there was another set of letters sent out. I, I came into this job July the 1st. I had not received anything as of July 1st from that second batch sent out May 30th, and now we are here today and I still haven't received anything. So that's why...
And no letters have been returned?
I will tell you, if it is approved, talking about changing your address, the next step would be to basically send out a letter to the people, these residents here, that basically tells them your address has now been changed. And it gives them the new address. And then if you approve the road, then I will plot, finish plotting a road, an extension of the road with the ranges to here, and then giving Mr. Gonzalez an actual address.
Guess the good news is if one of those residents are from out of town, their permanent address is probably out of town as well, so that would be your 75%, so.
Yeah, I think now that one can find their house better. And I will say, when you, when I do a development, the most aggravating thing that we have to do is name a road because it can't even sound like another road in that area, in that, in that postal district maybe?
Well, um, when I trained with Miranda
Yeah.
For that one day, um, she told me those rules had actually changed. They're wanting you to discard lane, loop, circle, drive. That is to be not even looked at. And also not necessarily the districts any longer, a, a county, the county as a whole. They don't want you to have tractor lane or tractor loop, even if they're in separate districts. It needs to be one tractor, something, possibly you could change the prefix, it could be new tractor or something like that, but...
Yeah, because every, every town has an oak or locust or something like that, you know? Some kind of wood, you know? That's, you know?
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I can see that happening. I could see why they do that. In that way, it's not confused. Poplar's real, can, can, you know?
You can't have upper and lower any longer. You can't have an upper long branch, lower long branch. I don't know if y'all have. I know there's a long branch, but I don't know if there's...
But I, I just know you've got to be real creative. In fact, I, I think somebody said one time, you know, get a Charlotte directory and just go through the road names and try to find you one, cause you might find something you like there, you know, or something. But anyway, it is hard to name a road that doesn't sound like something, something else. Are you, y'all okay with?
If you're okay with Nightshade, I'm okay with Nightshade.
I think it's all right. It's out in White Oak. Have you ever been out in White Oak?
Yeah.
White Oak's, uh, it's like being in the national forest is what I say.
I guess Nightshade is caused by the moon.
Yeah, I guess so.
The moon.
If we keep going, we're probably going to see some shade come through them windows from the moon. We might get to see it firsthand before this meeting, so.
I, I told Nancy we'd try to take it easier on her, and I think we're, we're making her go through the mail here.
You're fine, I, cause the, the next meeting, I have a whole nother one for you. It seems like with the influx of people purchasing property in these remote areas where there's not, there's just been logging roads and there's just drives, it's going to be...
Yeah, they're going to start having to, you know, reach contact, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, we approve Night.
I'll make the motion.
Nightshade Lane as the private road in the, I guess it's the White Oak community.
I'll make a motion, approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any, uh, any other discussion?
Just a, an added comment, and you may not be aware of this, my wife works for the Postal Service and she says you can do delivery receipt and they do not have to send anything back to you, but it shows that it has been delivered either to the mailbox or the post office box.
That's true. You can go on USPS.com, something like that and do a search. Um, and so you don't have to do, pay the extra for return receipts. You can just...
Correct. This is a paid part as well, but they just do not have to send anything back to you and they don't have to go get it. It just shows that it was delivered.
Okay.
So when you notify them, you change it, that might be a, a way to keep them from coming back later and saying, I didn't have any idea about it because it was put in their box, what they did from there.
That would probably be... That would probably be a good thing to start doing, yeah.
So is it Sandra Clark or Ronald and Lisa Carson who lives on that road?
Oh, goodness.
Because you've got two signatures, but those are the two you don't have, so I'm assuming that one of those two people live in.
I am sorry, I didn't print out the GIS on that.
It's all right.
I mean, I have the four, I just don't know where they lay when it comes to the parcels, the Sandra Clark, the Yoder Clark, the Ronald and Lisa Carson, I'm sorry.
All right. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's not very, that's not a real offensive, I don't think, either, Nightshade, so. Okay.
Nightshade isn't, that's a type of plant, isn't it, Nightshade?
Plant.
There's, it's a type of indigenous plant or something, look it up, Google. I don't know, but yeah, it's something to do with plants.
See there?
I don't know if I'm going to Google Nightshade. It'll tell when it come up.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay, thank you, thank you Nancy, we didn't mean to ring you through the ringer.
No, you're okay.
Okay, next, our next item of business under our regular agenda is the request approval of a budget amendment for fiscal year eighteen nineteen, our Internal Service Fund, nine-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars. Additional health insurance claims occurred before June thirtieth to be paid from the general fund, and it just won't go away, will it Julie?
It won't go away, I hope this is the last time I'm going to be coming to you with the fiscal year eighteen nineteen budget amendments. But as we were paying the invoices that came in after June thirtieth for all of the expenses that had been incurred before June thirtieth, we had to accrue them back, and we were going negative very quickly. We did expect to get about eight-hundred-thousand dollars in credits from our reinsurance company, and we have started getting those in, last Friday we got about a half a million. So that's going to help the cause quite a bit. But I'm, would like to do this budget amendment. The nine-hundred-and-forty-four thousand is the increase in the health insurance fund budget, but you'll notice the amount coming from the general fund is only seven-hundred-and-seven, let's see where it is, seven-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And that's because we actually had additional revenue coming into the health insurance fund that we hadn't budgeted, some of the dependent expense, the dependent deductions coming out of payroll, and that kind of thing came in a little bit higher. So I was able to increase those and then increase the expenses, but I was still short about seven-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. So I'm bringing that from the general fund. And the way I'm hitting the general fund, you'll notice there's a whole lot of revenues that I'm increasing. We noticed after the fiscal year ended, we had all the revenues posted, that some revenues came in a little bit higher than budgeted. There weren't many that came in enough higher than budgeted, I had to spread it over a number of revenues here to get all the way up to this seven-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. But you will notice that the registered motor vehicle tax for twenty-eighteen has come in quite a bit higher. I was able to increase that budget four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. So that took us over halfway to get to this budget amendment. So we're going to increase the general fund, the seven-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-five-hundred, and then we're putting that into the health insurance fund. And in addition to that, we're increasing the health insurance fund by those additional revenues that we got from payroll deductions.
Appreciate you moving all that around.
It took a while to figure out.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the budget amendment from the Internal Service Fund of nine-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars for additional health insurance claims occurred, incurred before June thirtieth to be paid from the general fund.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay, you want to pose? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our third item of regular agenda is the request approval of the July twenty-nineteen refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries, Tax Assessor Judy Hickman. Hi Judy.
Good evening. I'm requesting approval of the July two thousand and nineteen releases, refunds, amendments, and discoveries. We had seventy-seven dollars and fifty-five cents in motor vehicles refunds, releases, were five thousand three forty-seven, forty-six, and we had a little over seven thousand in discoveries.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Judy? Do you know when the tax bills might be going out, is that?
We plan on calculating by the end of this week.
You know, this week, okay, I just hope people out there know.
They can prepay now though, right?
I think so.
I've prepaid, I prepaid Mr. West back there, not my own. Somebody else's, but not my own. I'll get those paid though.
Yeah, that's what I was impressed.
I give him my bill.
If you pay, if it's somebody else's, you can pay everyone. Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the July twenty-nineteen refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, you want to pose?
Thank you.
See names, thank you Judy. Okay, our fourth item of the regular agenda is to request approval of the July twenty-nineteen tax collections, updates, and refunds. We have our tax collector Greg West.
Good evening Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request approval of our July two thousand and nineteen tax collections updates. As far as our remaining balance on our two thousand and eighteen, as of July thirty-first, we had seven-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars, six-hundred-and-seventy-one, sixty cents. As of today, we have reduced that down to seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand for, we have collected on two thousand and eighteen ninety-eight point one-six percent. We are currently taking prepayments. Today, we collected over twelve thousand dollars in prepayments for two thousand and nineteen. So it's going pretty good.
Anyone have any questions?
If we look back on the two thousand and seventeen, it says there's still three-hundred-and-fifty thousand owed.
That is correct, and when we started the fiscal year out, there was one-point-one million left on two thousand and seventeen. So it was quite, quite a bit. We've collected close to eight-hundred thousand just in two thousand and seventeen taxes this year. So but our remaining balance, starting out this fiscal year, you know, is around seven-hundred thousand instead of one-point-one million. So I think we have a better start.
Good.
You know, now.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we request approval of the July twenty-nineteen tax collections, updates, and refunds.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. You want to pose? Okay. Okay, the fifth item of the regular agenda is to request approval of order of collections, and go ahead Greg.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request approval of the order of collections, please.
You all have that in your pocket? Does anybody have any questions? You're hoping the tax bills will go out here in a week or so?
Yes, as soon as the assessor's office gets all their edits finished, which she assumes to happen the end of this week, we should, we'll get the scroll from them, and then we hope to be able to turn that around in about five working days and get them out by the end of the month.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Greg on that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we request approval of the order of collections.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay, you want to pose? Okay, and then, thank you Greg.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, then we added, the sixth item was the fair, the alcohol at the fair. Greg, Frank, did you?
I've been asked to give an opinion about the status of the alcohol sales at the county fairgrounds, apparently related to the upcoming county fair. And I wanted to review, I just reviewed the lease that the county has with the, with an outfit that's now called Haywood County Fairgrounds, Inc., I think. Yes, Haywood County Fairgrounds, Inc. Haywood County Fairgrounds, Inc. is the organization, a nonprofit corporation that leases the county fairgrounds from the county and then operates that facility. The lease was first entered into, the oldest one I'm looking at is nineteen ninety, and there have been various amendments to it since then, the name of the organization has changed, the purposes have changed a little bit, the financing and the build, all of that's all had changes made in it, but nothing changed about the fundamental organization of the, of the fact that it's leased. The county is not the operator of the facility, the county is the landlord. Okay, just think of it, that's a very easy way to think about it, we're the landlord. The operation of what goes on there is governed by the tenant and, of course, by the terms of the lease. The terms of the lease permit and authorize the tenant to operate the place to, for agricultural county fairgrounds, and then goes on to say forty other things that might be or could be used there. It's all, it's a very broad grant of authority to the tenant to operate the facility there. The lease requires, as one provision of it, that the use that's made of it must quote, "comply with all laws, ordinances, decrees, orders, rules, and regulations of any lawful authority, agency, or governmental unit having jurisdiction over the premises." And that's a standard lease term. It just says that anything you do on this facility, Mr. Tenant, has to be in compliance with the laws, the general laws. And that is a, that's the background for the inquiry about whether or not the fairgrounds, apparently, perhaps for the first time, I don't actually know that because I don't know, but the county now has a, an ordinance and a law of general application that allows alcohol sales outside the unincorporated, outside the incorporated towns of the county, okay? The same referendum or law or whatever that was passed to authorize alcohol sales out in the county authorizes alcohol sales in legal places where they get a permit from the state ABC board. So that fairgrounds is located in an unincorporated area of the county, therefore, the sale of alcohol is governed by the general laws applicable to the sale of alcohol anywhere, okay, in the county. And so the question that was posed to me was, can the county control the, or prohibit the sale of alcohol on the fairgrounds in this instance? And my opinion is that the county, by ordinance, cannot regulate the sale of alcohol out in the county. The regulation of the sale of alcohol is governed by the state ABC laws and the regulations published by the state ABC board. Those regulations, if they are complied with by the tenant in the operation of their facility, trump any local ordinance. You can't pass a local ordinance that takes the place of a state law on the same subject. It's called preemption in the law. And it means that, that local control over where you can sell alcohol is taken from the local governing boards when you pass ordinance, when you pass by referendum or however you do it, laws in conformity with the state ABC law. And the state ABC law allows the, the, I presume, because they're apparently going to apply for a permit, what's called, usually called a temporary permit for sales of alcohol at the fairgrounds for some part or place on the grounds where the county fair is going to be going on, some part of it. I'm not, I really don't know the details of this, I wasn't asked about that. It's asked about, can we by ordinance limit, prohibit, or regulate that sale? And the answer is no, we can't, we don't have the legal authority to do so. When, if, as long as the tenant complies with the terms of the state law, then they perceive that they're no different than any other tenant. And we're no different than any other landlord. If we had a landlord who objected on any particular basis to a tenant's use of the property that was otherwise legal, you could bring it up when the lease renewal came up, but the lease renewal here is not, we're not at that time. Does that answer the question that's been posed to me?
It does.
Okay. Are there any other questions about the opinion I've given you, which I've rattled off like I was a law professor, but that's just the way I talk anyway, okay? It's a lot of dependent clauses in that, you know? Okay. Thanks.
When is the lease up again? A different topic.
Beats me. I've looked, I've looked, I'm.
I did too, there's two dates in there. One of them is April twenty-twenty, and the other one is not until August of twenty-twenty-three.
That, you know, and I probably ought to really look at that, we certainly will want to be looking at that because this, this represents the county attorney's file of the lease at the, at the fairgrounds, and it goes back to nineteen ninety. And there's, there's a lot of stuff in there, but nothing that changes this, yeah.
Yeah, in twenty-ten, when we had the recession, we reorganized the fairgrounds board, and we made it a professional board with the seven-member board. Before that, there was like, I think there was twenty-nine members at the fairground.
Oh my god.
And when you'd have a meeting, it was, it was, I don't want to say what it was, but anyway, it was, it was unwieldy, I guess would be a good word, so. But anyway, it's more, now it's, we have seven people that do that, so. And we spelled it out in twenty-ten, and it made it, it operates a lot better. We have, we had hired a manager and, and I will say this, just for the public's knowledge, is that Haywood County does not run the fair, or the fairgrounds, it's run by a nonprofit board that we do appoint the members of, but those members do do that, and they do work really hard. I know Tommy will attest that. It's a working board, and it's hard to get people to serve on it because you'll go there on a flea market day, when they used to have the concessions, and there'd be board members in there doing the concessions, and, you know, it was pretty. I know I've worked the truck pull on Sunday, that they'll be having this coming Sunday, and it was, it was busy for about five or six hours, so that's a hard work, that's a hard Saturday, Sunday. It's a hard Sunday afternoon, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I could clarify just one comment that you made because I've, I've heard other members of the, of the board also refer to the, to the, the fairgrounds as being operated by a board.
Right.
It's actually operated by a nonprofit corporation called the Haywood Fairgrounds Incorporated. You all may appoint the directors
Right.
of that corporation, but that corporation operates as an entity unto itself as the tenant in this, in this facility. I clarify that just so people who might be watching or otherwise had a question. The legal status is that they're a separate, independent, nonprofit corporation. We just happen to have this connection to them, we own the land and we appoint their directors. But their directors have their own independent responsibilities to operate the corporation.
Thank you Frank, yeah, I don't want to be wrong about that for sure.
I think your point was that we don't have nothing, I mean, we don't control what they do or what they don't do.
they do or what they don't do, so.
Other than appointing them.
Other than appointing them, right.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Okay, our next order of business is appointments, and I'll turn that over to Brian, we have the request appointments of Ron Leatherwood and Shane Valery to the Haywood County Sediment Board.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the vacancies for the sediment board have been advertised numerous times with no applicants, board policy states that a city member that served more than two terms can be reappointed if it causes a detriment to the functions of the board, considering we haven't had applications from anyone else, we currently asked for reappointment of Ron Leatherwood, who has served since 2002, and Shane Valier, who has served since 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, and then the next is the Haywood County Planning Board.
The planning board has also advertised numerous times with one applicant that would qualify for the farmer position and two applications for the at-large position, so they're asking for reappointment of Charles Medford and Jennifer Best as an appointment to the farm position, and the at-large, we actually have two applicants, I think you interviewed them earlier today, Candace Hattlick and Sarah Allison Sellers, we have the ballots that we'll give you.
Thank you, sir.
I will, while we're doing this, this comment, and we had two great applicants, and we encourage them to reapply.
Should we move to reappoint Charles Medford and Jennifer Best as the farmers?
Can I have a motion for that?
So that's my motion.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, the applicant Candace Lattick has received a majority of the votes for the, for the position, that is the.
The at-large.
Okay, thank you, so we don't need to, I guess that's, we voted on that, so, okay, so we don't have a closed session, thank goodness, I'll move on to our adjournment, and I just want to have a reminder that our next meeting will be, the first will be held on Tuesday due to September 3rd being Labor Day, the Labor Day holiday, Monday, September 2nd, so our next meeting will be September 3rd on Tuesday at 9:00 AM in this courtroom. Does anybody have any other business for the board?
I guess you have anything.
You sure you don't want to present anything? I was trying to get her to help, help some folks, but, okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.